All right, we're gonna go ahead and call the Finance Board meeting to order. I would like to entertain a motion or a recommendation to elect a President of the Board of Finance. I will just remind our Board that they would like the President and the Secretary to hold the same office on the regular Board. So if, just keep that in mind as we move forward, that might help direct us a little bit. So I'd like to go ahead and entertain that motion. Okay, so I have a motion made and seconded by, was that Ken? That we go ahead and retain Terry Barnhart as the President of the Finance, Board of Finance, and Steve Stickter as the Secretary of Board of Finance. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right. Agenda item number two, Investment Report. Tom McFarland, would you be able to do, go through that for us? Would you like the microphone, sir?
No. In your board packet, you have the Board of Finance Investment Report. You'd be able to compare the balances between December 31st, 2020 and December 31st, 2021. We do have our main checking account on two million dollars of CDs for a total balance this year of $4.48 million compared to $4.18 last year. So we have increased slightly there. And at the bottom of that report, you can see the interest we earned in 2021 of $8,000. Long way from 2019 where we received over $101,000. So, any questions? Second report is the cancellation of outstanding checks. That requires that we receive back any outstanding check that's older than two years after the December 31st that it was written. We have, do have two checks. Those will be reseeded into the Lunch Account and the Education Fund as they were never deposited. And lastly, we have a new report. It's required that we report out on our fiscal indicators. There are five fiscal indicators mentioned in this report. At the bottom, you can see the link to the complete report. Our ADM, we have been trending down except for this year. We had a tick up. Fund balances remain positive with the exceptions of federal grants. Federal grants are always negative because they are reimbursement, so we've gotta spend the money and then file for reimbursement. Our deficit surplus, we've had a surplus every year except 2020. The reason we didn't have it this year was just a timing issue of when the reimbursements were filed for the federal grants. And then in, I think it was 2019, we received bond money that we didn't spend until 2020, so it just caused a bigger surplus previous year and a deficit second year. Fund balances, a percentage of expenditures, our reserves have increased drastically over the last five or six years to the point where there's no intent to continue that increase, hoping to plateau and hold those reserves steady. Don't wanna get into the global effect and get to decreasing that right now our reserves are healthy. And last, lastly, the revenue by type. We are funded, state tuition support is the majority of our funding. Coming in second is property taxes and then very minimal is fees and stuff like that. So overall, I would say our fiscal state is healthy.
That being said, Tom, a question was asked, I think Mr. Stickter asked that. Typically, the, from the September count to the February count, we have seen a dip in that. Am I correct in saying we're up about 10 right now?
Yeah. Trend wide, we usually lose 15 to 20 kids between September and February. We were at 910 in September, and I think we're gonna be close to 925, so we're okay.
So nine, last one was like 924.
Yeah, we're gonna be up 15 this year barring any major changes in the next few weeks, so another positive.
Yes, I'll go ahead and make a motion that we, or ask for a recommendation to adjourn the Board of Finance session. Okay, moved by Steve, seconded by Wes. All in favor? All right, we will, we will resume at 7:00 PM with the reorganizational session.
All right, let's go ahead and stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As is typical, the first board meeting of January, we have a reorganization session. So we'll go ahead and start with agenda item number one, which is the Oath of Office. But due to the fact that we do not have any new board members recently elected, we do not necessarily have to give the Oath of Office. So we'll move right on to agenda item number two. Agenda item number two is the election of officers. So I would like to entertain a motion or a recommendation for the Triton Board of Trustee President. Do I have a recommendation?
I recommend Terry Barnhart. Make a motion.
I'll second Terry Barnhart as President.
Okay, we have a motion made by Steve, a second by Wes to elect, reelect Terry Barnhart as the President of the Board. And with that mo, or excuse me, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. With that motion and with that passing, I will go ahead and pass the microphone over to Terry.
All right, I would entertain a motion to, for the Vice President.
I move that.
It's been moved by Kevin, or Ken, seconded by Steve. All in favor? If Kevin accepts, motion passes 5-0. I'd entertain a motion for the Secretary.
If Steve will do it, well, let Steve Stickter remain as Secretary.
It's been moved by Wes, seconded by Ken. All in favor? Motion passes 5-0. Our meeting date, time, and location currently is the second Monday of each month at 7:00 PM in the Administration Building. Everyone agreeable to this? Okay? Then I need a motion to?
It's all moved.
It's been moved by Kevin, seconded by Steve. All in favor? Motion passes 5-0. Onto appointments. We need an appointment for Treasurer.
It's moved, Tom McFarland appointed as Corporation Treasurer.
Second.
It's been moved by Steve, seconded by Kevin. All in favor? Motion passes 5-0. Our Attorney currently is Warwick and Boyne, is that correct? It's been moved by Ken, seconded by Steve. All in favor? Motion passes 5-0. Now on to our ISBA Delegate and Legislation Liaison. Currently, it was Steve. I'd entertain a motion. You do like it, though. You do.
I move that Steve Stickter continues to do that.
Second.
It's been moved by Wes, seconded by Kevin. All in favor? Motion passes 5-0. Now we have appointments for the Student Handbook, the Textbook Adoption, and the Board Policies. Wes, you had done the Student Handbook before. I had done the Textbook Adoption and the Board Policies. Unless anyone else would like to jump up.
I move we just those, those issues.
I move it too.
All right. Yeah, yeah. So we'll lump those together if someone wants to make a motion of those.
I move we accept. We appoint those representatives.
Nope. Okay, it's moved by Steve, seconded by Ken. All in favor? Motion passes 5-0. All right. Currently, our Board's salary is $1,850 per year. The limit is two, correct? And I know in the past, you could take it all, give some back, or... So, make a motion to?
I move we keep it the same.
Okay. It's been moved by Kevin, seconded by Ken. Any other discussion? All in favor? Motion passes 5-0. In front of you, you should find the Uniform Conflict of Interest Disclosure Statement. And all signatures are required on those each year, whether you, actually, I think, do business or not, we just all do it, right?
Yeah. If you don't have any conflicts, just write down them there.
Okay. All right. I would entertain a motion to adjourn the reorganization session.
It's all moved, second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded by Steve and Kevin. Then we will go on into our regular session. And since we already stood and did the pledge, we will move on to our consensus agenda.
My move, we approve the vouchers presented to us in the amount of $1,197,426.88 plus payrolls of $420,311.76 for a grand total of expenditures of $1,617,738.64 plus the minutes of our assembly meeting.
Second.
The move by Steve, seconded by Kevin. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion passes. At this time, we would entertain any patrons' comments, if there are any. Okay. We will move on to personnel.
All right, I would recommend the approval of Lisa Andrews as an elementary special education teacher.
I so move.
It's been moved by Steve, seconded by Ken. All in favor? Motion passes 5-0.
I would recommend the approval of Deborah Green as the High School Custodian.
Second.
It's been moved by Kevin, seconded by Steve. All in favor? Motion passes 5-0.
I'd recommend the approval of Karen Warsham as a substitute teacher. I'm gonna go ahead and lump these substitute teachers in at the same time, as they're all reputable individuals. Approve Delaney Groves as a substitute teacher. Approve Casey Yarborough as a substitute teacher, and Ruthie McCullough as a substitute teacher.
Which Karen Warsham is that?
Yeah, yeah.
The one that was the, the one that was the Secretary at the...
Either one would be good.
Oh, okay, I don't know the other one.
She was, she ran the post as well.
Oh, okay, yeah. The one that was the Secretary of the High School for a while.
Why then Secretary?
Yes.
I move we accept those presented.
Second.
The move by Steve, seconded by Ken. Any discussion? More discussion, all in favor? Motion passes 5-0.
I recommend the approval, we'll go ahead and lump these two together as well, as they're volunteer coaches. Aaron Feldman is fifth grade girls' basketball volunteer coach, and Brandon Stewart, seventh grade girls' basketball volunteer coach. That is Allison Stewart, who we've already approved as the seventh grade basketball coach. It's her husband. He was actually a assistant varsity football, or excuse me, I think he was a volunteer assistant for the varsity football team as well. So, all of his background check and everything was already on file. She had requested that she had a little help and, and asked for him to do that, so.
As long as I get along.
Second.
Yep, it's been moved by Kevin, seconded by Steve. Any other discussion? All in favor? Motion passes 5-0.
The next item, I'd like to recommend the second reading of the Corporation Policy. We once again met with Neola and have just simply reviewed a lot of the policies that really we've already recommended. We just needed to clean a lot of those up. So we're bringing to you the second reading of the Corporation Policy. I guess what I'm saying is there's a variety of policies in there. It's not aligned to one topic or subject. There was a lot of cleanup to be done with, just minor errors and corrections.
I move we do the second reading of the Corporation Policy. Second.
The move by Ken, seconded by Wes. All in favor? Motion passes 5-0.
Onto other business. I'd recommend the approval of the transfer of funds from the Education Fund to the Operations Fund, which is the typical January procedure. So I recommend that approval.
It's all moved, second.
Moved by Ken, wait, Kevin, seconded by Steve. All in favor?
I have a question, Tom. About how much money was that? I think I saw it someplace, but I don't remember what that was.
$905,000.
Okay, thank you.
It's a result of when the state, back in 2019, changed from General Fund to Education and switched some classifications to where people are paid. So that way, tuition support, Health Fund, goes.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Motion passes 5-0.
Also, I'd like to recommend the approval of the transfer to the Rainy Day Fund Resolution.
I have a question. What's the fund balance?
What's fund number?
Fund number 610? Six, 610 maybe?
Uh, 341, 541, 341.
610.
No, I'm sorry, 941,000.
Yep.
Gotta make it bigger.
Was this transfer, or that is before the transfer?
As I recall, Tom, you told us you put appropriations in for the Rainy Day Fund this year, correct?
Correct. No intent to use them unless needed, but it, it'd say if we ever would need them, it would say additional rebate.
I move we approve that transfer.
Second.
The move by Steve, seconded by Ken. Any other discussion? All in favor? Motion passes 5-0.
And I recommend the appropriation transfers, as we've discussed.
It's all moved, second.
It's been moved by Kevin, seconded by Wes. Any discussion?
Is that in, in year-end appropriation transfers?
Just anything that was over budgeted or under, any single line item? Move it around?
The report was a few pages on the, on the board.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Motion passes 5-0.
I recommend the approval of the transportation request from the Nappany Missionary Church. As you're aware, last year, they requested that our Transportation Department take their students to camp. That obviously went well enough for them to ask us to do that again. I believe we have had people sign up for that already, so we were a little concerned with where that fell as far as fair time and all of that stuff. But they would ask for that, I would recommend that for approval at this time.
I will approve that request from the Nappany Missionary Church. Second.
The move by Ken, seconded by Wes. Any other discussion?
Did we have any issues at all that anybody knows about with that?
No, I think there were some discussions of just timeliness and where to go and those type of things, as far as maybe some changes in some schedules. But as far as that, I mean, it was just logistical things that, that typically happen with taking kids to a park. Yeah, yeah.
All in favor? Motion passes 5-0.
I recommend the approval of the Floor Maintenance Quote, as we do each summer, from Cedar Creek Flooring for the High School, Elementary, and TAC gym floors. The cost of that is $15,943 as listed there.
So moved, second.
The move by Steve, seconded by Kevin. Any other discussion? All in favor? Motion passes 5-0.
We'll go ahead and move on to core values. I think it's important to start off with our core values of just, I think our organization really cares about its people. And it's no different, obviously, when we lose an individual in our corporation. So I just wanna, my heart goes out to the King family and the loss of their mother, Jerry King. We did post about that, and I apologize that that may have come off inappropriate to our, to our public. But I did wanna let our, our Board know that I did speak to her daughter. She was aware of kind of how we were gonna go about that, and she was, she was very grateful, very respectful about it, thanked us all over the place for just commemorating her mother. I will tell you, the viewing, or not the viewing, the celebration of life was gonna be last Friday, but unfortunately, they have some, some illness in the family. So we will make sure we get that information out to both the High School and to the Board when they reschedule that. So I just wanna send our condolences to the King family. Let them know we appreciate Jerry and all that she did for specifically our High School over the last approximately four years, just about four years. So our heart goes out to them. Continuous improvements. We talked about our first strategic planning session was held the afternoon of January 3rd. We worked through a SWOT analysis, which was strengths, weakness, opportunities, and challenges that, that we, obviously, the strengths that we have as a corporation, maybe some of the weaknesses that we can continue to improve on, opportunities that come of that, and then, of course, the challenges that we face. It was a good exercise, but I'll tell you, we, we have a lot to be thankful for at Triton School Corporation, and a lot of that is because of the people that work here, the Board that we have, the individuals that care a lot about our kids. So obviously, we're working through that. Did come up with some things that we definitely need to work on for sure, and we're looking forward to that process continuing, most likely at the end of January. We have not set a second date for that second workshop. The inFocus team had already compiled consistent themes from the surveys, from our students, staff, and parents completed over the last couple of months. So they were very, very impressed with the feedback that they received and the percentage of individuals that actually completed those. So I think amongst our staff and our students, there was above a 70% answer rate. I don't know exactly how they, do you remember how they said that? Response rate, I guess? And they said that was just incredible. So we did make it a priority, we did ask our students to do that during an SLC time. Our staff obviously took that very serious and felt that that was an opportunity to give us some feedback, and we appreciate that. Shared leadership over the last several weeks, the Triton School administrators, nurses have continued dialogue concerning our data from the first semester and how we can continue to provide a common sense approach to combating the virus while also making sure to keep our scholars and staff safe. I pushed out an email on Saturday, actually to our, our staff on Friday after we spoke a little bit about that at our professional development on Monday. I sent an email on Friday just confirming those new procedures. I pushed out an email and a call to our patrons on Saturday evening to review our updated quarantine protocol and share some of the information that we have gathered since August 11th, our first student day. The numbers are concerning. The numbers of students being quarantined continue to be concerning, concerning statistic. Therefore, we continue to do our best to take steps to keep healthy kids in school and ask for parents to keep those who are not feeling well at home until they are fever-free or symptom-free. So I'll just tell you, difficult decisions there. I wanna thank Jerry, our nurse, Naomi, our nurse, Mrs. Cook, Mr. McCann, all the people that in those times of trying to make the best decision possible while also keeping our staff and students safe, it's just, I appreciate their support and just unified effort. So if we have any questions on those, I did send those to the Board as well. I've shared those bullets. The biggest changes probably were the, the five-day quarantine, which became a national conversation on December 27th, I believe it was, with the Presidential Press Conference. The State Department of Health came back on Thursday, December 30th, talked a little bit more about that. We kinda gathered our thoughts last week to just make sure we were all on the same page and see what that looked like at Triton School Corporation. Some, some interesting statistics that we, that I did share with our community and with our Board in, in writing was the fact is that we had approximately, overall, we had approximately 400 and, what, 45 quarantines in the first semester, which is just, I mean, is just a lot. I mean, that, if you think about every one of those, that simply means we're sending kids home to do education from home, and that's pretty disconcerting. 15 positive cases at the, at the elementary and 34 at the high school. But I will, I'm happy to say that we can only really document, and I, and I said possibly because we really don't know how things are transmitted and if somebody got the virus from somebody else, but approximately seven students that we feel were sick because of a close contact, right? So if you think about 400 and some odd quarantines, seven of those maybe came sick because of being a close contact, really made us look a little bit closer at what we're doing. We are trying to incentivize mask wearing. That's not a mandate. I think we, as a Board, have said we're not gonna be into, to overarching mandates unless we feel it's absolutely necessary. So I think we hold true to that ideal. But we're trying to say, you know what, if you wanna just give yourself one more layer of protection and not be quarantined, go ahead and mask up. Do they work? I don't know. Do, do vaccines work? I don't know. The, the debate that is happening right now is ridiculous, and we don't wanna get in the middle of all of that. We just want kids to be educated. We want them to be in the classroom, and we want them to continue to learn. So, so that's kinda, kinda where we're at right now, and we'll continue to adjust. We don't want our pride to be so extreme that we can't adjust if need be, and I wanna thank the Board for their confidence to be able to make some of those decisions as needed. And we can just know that we continue to have those conversations as, as time goes. Moving on to social responsibility. You know what, I did not have one for that one. Accountability. The Triton staff took part in building level professional development last Monday. They're completing their training on how best to identify human trafficking and suicide prevention training. This is just one more example of the important work that our teachers and staff do on a daily basis to try and keep our, our students and our fellow staff members safe. I just wanna continue to reiterate our corporation goals underneath the accountability piece. Increase percent of students reading at or above grade level at 85%, and then increase overall pass rates on standardized tests by at least 20%. We know that math was a difficult area in our last testing cycle, and we wanna continue to increase that, and our students are working, or excuse me, our students and staff are working really, really hard to accomplish those goals. High expectations. I wanna thank Mrs. Cook, Mr. McCann, Mrs. LaShure. We met with Jesse Executive Director Linda Holland today to discuss how we can continue to get better at providing our resource scholars their least restrictive environment. So just diving into the data, seeing how best to, to meet those needs. Alignment. Strategic planning is obviously, once again, a great example of how are we, how we are most successful when our learning organization works together to achieve common goals. Some exciting things, our, our football bleachers are almost completed. If you haven't seen that, I encourage you to do that in the very short time that it's light out right now in Indiana. But those are almost finished, and they've done a great job of completing those. I will let the Board know that they are going to complete the baseball bleachers as well. Evidently, they are light enough when they are completed to pick up and put on the cement. So while they are on-site, they're gonna go ahead and complete the bleachers. We will have to move them, so the cement, when it's done in the spring, will be completed, and then we'll put those on, and Bruce will actually anchor those to the ground. So while they're here, so we don't have to take them off other jobs and/or get pushed back further and further and further, they're gonna go ahead and complete that when they're on-site. So excited to have the updates of those two areas done here real soon. I'm also excited to tell our Board and our community, we received a $35,000 grant from the K-21 Foundation, K-21 Health Foundation, excuse me, to go towards our weight room. Coach Eunice and a lot of our coaches have asked for quite some time for us to replace the racks and the weights in the weight room, and K-21 was generous by giving us the $35,000 it's gonna take to totally replace those racks, and they will be our colors, they'll have our names on them, they'll have our logos on the benches, so it'll really clean up that area moving forward. So excited about that. I do wanna draw the attention, the Board's attention, to the legislative updates. Quite a packed legislative session that we really, it seemed as if, I don't know, I, it just amazes me how they can come up with new laws every time, but they do. One of them that are especially concerning, I think we've discussed a little bit, is just the, one of the latest bills about Board members having to identify their, their affiliation or political party affiliation. That's one of the ones that I will tell you, the IASB, or excuse me, IAPSS people are definitely looking into and opposing. I will also tell you that the curriculum trans... I will also tell you that the curriculum transparency bill is another one. We know where this is coming from. A lot of the CRT conversation that's been taking place, the Critical Race Theory, parents wanting to make sure that they have a say and/or are informed about the curriculum that's going on in the classroom. That is something that is definitely on people's radar, and they're wanting to make sure that nobody's slipping stuff by them in our curriculum. I would tell our patrons, you are welcome anytime to ask questions about that. We'll be more than happy to show you what we're teaching our students. But this bill would take it to the next level of posting lesson plans and posting the books that are read and so on. So, it's just, as we talk about teachers and we talk about all the things that they have to do on a daily basis, this just feels like it's just one more thing to make that a really, really difficult transition. So, just know that IAPSS, ISBA, that many of you guys are a member of, are really looking at those and giving feedback on them. Who knows where they land? We know that they go through all sorts of processes, but that's something definitely to keep our eye on. Think we'll go ahead and move right into building level reports. Mrs. Cook, do you want to do that, or, oh, sorry, patrons' comments?
No, that guy questioned.
You are a patron.
Yes, but I maybe missed this in another meeting, but where did the old bleachers from the baseball field go?
So, we are, we actually, some of the bleachers from the football stands went to the Etna Green football field. And then, the smaller bleachers that are, that were at the baseball diamond, they're actually still out by the woods. So, they haven't gone anywhere yet. The town has talked about possibly wanting to put some of those around their baseball diamonds. So, that's just something we haven't done yet because we weren't sure that we'd be able to get that project done. So, those are still onsite. They haven't been given or gifted to anybody at this time, but that is definitely a conversation that they've expressed interest in those.
Sam, I make a comment to the board members. We actually do have two senators and two state representatives to cover our district. Tiffick and Newt Township is covered by a different senator and representative than the rest of us. So, Mr. Missler is our senator. Off the top of my head, I can't remember. I had those last year when I was sending them some information that both of these bills, Kurt Nicely represents some of us. But feel free to reach out to them, and they all have email addresses. I will just guarantee that you'll get a reply that's basically generic. And hopefully, that gets to a staffer that can pass on the information. But it does not hurt for us to reach out on these issues.
Do you mind if I go ahead and give Nate's report? He's feeling a little under the weather tonight, so I'm gonna go ahead and share out for him. So, we finished up first semester. Final exams went well. He does want to thank our staff. And obviously, we tried a few things there at the end of the semester to make sure kids could wrap up their work as far as bringing some of those quarantined kids back to make sure that they were on target to completing items and getting their testing in. So, appreciate all the flexibility that took, that took. Wrapping up, any makeup exams last week and then this week, because obviously, there were some students who were not able to attend. Professional development, as we discussed, January 3rd, suicide prevention, human trafficking. And he also did a RISE training for all the teachers, so they kind of understood what he was looking for when he came into the classroom and just be able to talk through that after watching a video of a teacher give a lesson and talk through some of the pros or the good things that they did and some of the things that they need to work on, just as he would do when he meets with them through his evaluation. We did have a K-9 training over break. The state police ran through drills. It's good that they are getting to know our building. We have built a pretty good relationship with them. The more they know the nooks and crannies of our building, the better we are prepared for unfortunate events that obviously we hope never happen. Study tables, a plan to start up next week, and homework help for struggling students continues. DECA students will compete at their district contest tomorrow in South Bend. And then, the counseling department, scheduling update. All high school students have made their schedule requests. Councilors are currently in the works of making the 22-23 schedule. Scheduling for junior high will take place January and February. Freshman orientation will be January 18th. This will be an informative meeting with some of our teachers promoting their classes. Albert Hanselman talking about CTE programs and an open house in the halls with our clubs, sports, and groups in hopes to get students more involved. I think Mrs. Barnhart made a really good notion when we talked a little bit about our strategic planning. Committee or counselors are doing just a bang-up job, and I appreciate all the efforts that they're giving. And they'll continue to have their hands full with a lot of the things that they're diving into right now, so appreciate that. So, Mrs. Cook, the elementary report?
Best for last here. Everybody else sat down for their report. I'm gonna sit down for my report. If that's okay. No, that's all right. So, as Mr. Rival mentioned earlier, we have had quite a few students quarantined since returning from Thanksgiving break. I feel like it really kind of started to heat up there and then going into Christmas break. We are over, and we're not through, you know, this week has been tough, too. So, we are seeing overall just more illnesses, just kids sick. And then, but also more students who have tested positive from COVID than last year as far as the student rate. I really do appreciate Jerry and Naomi, their efforts even during the day, in the evenings, on the weekends, when they're getting calls and we're making calls and coming up to the school to kind of do some measuring and check on desks and that kind of thing. I mean, we're all in that, but they're really helping out a lot, having those conversations. And it's really helpful for me that they have conversations, but it's easy to even, with parents, I was gonna say. But it is also easy to get confused as the guidelines change sometimes and so forth, so I appreciate their help very much. In spite of all the quarantines, we were able to complete the bulk of our mid-year assessments before Christmas break. And in January 3rd, we spent time looking at our mid-year data. While we are making progress toward our goals, it's not quite as much growth as we have seen in previous years. It's still kind of tough going. Lots of absences still, kids missing out, coming in lower than they have been in the past. And we're still not back to teaching full force in all of our strategies like we would normally do, so. But we are, we are making gains. We are making gains. I'd like to thank Melissa, Elashure, for leading the teachers through that process. As you know, based on the requirements by the state now in Indiana, we do a dyslexia screen with our kindergarteners, first graders, first and second graders in the middle of the year. So, basically, we identified fifteen students whose mid-year performance put them at some risk for dyslexia. We don't diagnose it, but we do say there are some indicators that are consistent with dyslexia. That's two fewer students than were identified last year at this time, so I think that's good. And we have more students, so I still, I think that's a very good trend, if we're starting that trend. Those students just today started a new intervention, which is a dyslexia-approved program for our stars. So, I appreciate Terry Large and Marcia Kaiser for doing those and implementing those programs. As Mr. Rival also said, we welcome two new staff members, Lisa and Stephanie Andrews, not related, that I'm aware of. But Lisa is our new special education teacher. She's got experience in both special education and counseling. And so far, the thumbs up, okay, is what we're saying, and we're glad to have her. Although I was her today, so, and probably will be tomorrow. But the kids are doing great with the change, and I appreciate that because I know that's difficult sometimes for parents in the middle of the year. Stephanie Andrews is helping with our mostly kindergarten, but also sometimes preschool. She's doing a great job in getting certified so that she can work with the preschoolers, and I appreciate her work with that. We did an orientation last week. As far as extracurriculars, our fifth and sixth grade girls' basketball has begun. Fifth grade continues with Dare during the school day. Fourth graders have Little Hoosiers once a month after school, for those who are interested. We have a good number of kids who are doing that this year. And fifth and sixth now have the opportunity this year, this is the second year now, to participate in JV Winter Guard. That starts on Monday, and that is, leads into being able to work with the color guard, with the band, as they get older, with the varsity guards. So, that's, we had a lot of fifth and sixth graders who said they were interested and took information. Now, I don't know how many will show up on Monday, but last year, we only had four, but that was our first year ever. So, maybe we'll have five. That'd be great if we could do that. Also, in March, we hope to offer a new program for elementary students. It's an after-school program that meets twice a week. It's called Girls on the Run, and that's kind of a strange name. I don't know what everybody thinks about, but they might, it's not about runaway girls or anything. It's actually a health and fitness kind of club that also has a curriculum for building confidence in students. It's all about kind of goal-setting and building confidence and self-esteem and making good choices, just being a well-rounded person. It's a lot of fun. Mrs. Vermillion taught it before when she taught at Rochester. So, she is, I guess, she's going to be one of our coaches, also Sarah Melling, kindergarten teacher, and Kim Kelly. And then, Marcy Feldman, Brian's wife, is going to be our liaison, our site liaison, and also an assistant coach. So, this is gonna be something new at the very end of the program. They are ready to run in a 5K that's just for the girls on the run from all across, like, northern Indiana. And it's a really, it's a good time from what I understand. It's something that we can offer some of our kids, elementary kids who may not be athletic, may not have any extracurriculars to participate in yet, but we're gonna try it this year and see what we get. We need to have at least eight. And it's, I think it's like grades three to six, so more on that will be coming. Also, Melissa and I will be meeting with teachers Friday and Monday to look at their, the progress on their personal student learning objectives for their class. It's kind of a mid-year check-in. And we're looking at this, kind of the same data that we had, but their own personal goals that they have set for this year and looking about how much progress that their students have made. I think that's it.
All right, I would ask for a motion to adjourn. Okay, then we're going to adjourn at 7:39. Thank you.